Good afternoon. We're going to call to order the Cuyahoga County Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, October the 27th, 2015. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron. Mr. Schron is absent today. Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Germana?
Here.
And Council President Brady?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to excuse Councilman Schron's absence today. I think we all know his mother passed on. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, then Councilman Schron is excused from the Committee of the Whole. Any public comment related to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed in to speak.
Okay. Item four, refer to the committee. This is our main order of business today, our only order of business at the Committee of the Whole. Would you please read the resolution into the record?
Resolution number 2015-0210, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $65 million for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing, renovating, improving, or repairing sports facilities and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right. What we have here in front of us is what I would call the generic language, and we need to introduce the proposed substitute, which I believe should be up here. And it really just is the, as I call it, guts of the legislation. Is there anybody who... Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And any discussion on accepting the substitute? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The substitute is accepted. And I guess we've got a guest here for Tim Oftemack.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I am here in the role of chairman of the Board of Gateway Economic Development Corporation. And I am prepared to summarize for you, to the extent the council is interested, the capital repairs that the Gateway Board has considered and passed along pursuant to our policies and procedures to the council. As we've discussed previously, primarily dating back to the days of the campaign to extend the excise tax, to refresh everyone's memory, cigarettes, liquor, beer, and wine, the so-called sin tax, it's an excise tax. There are specific unit prices, so it's not a percentage tax, it doesn't grow with inflation. Those... That tax was extended by approval of the voters in the county. It was... The levy commenced August 1st of 2015, and it expires on July 31st, 2035. It is the third iteration of the excise tax for the sports facilities in Cleveland. Back in 2012, Gateway's Board approved certain policies and procedures that I'll get to in a moment. Gateway and the two teams endeavored to renegotiate the respective leases between, respectively, the Indians in Gateway and the Cavaliers in Gateway, back in the mid 2000s, to clarify capital repair responsibilities. To summarize that briefly, for all single repairs in excess of $500,000, the corporation, meaning Gateway, is responsible for execution and funding those capital repairs. For all repairs less than... Any single repair or group of repairs that's less than $500,000, the individual teams, as tenants in their buildings, are responsible for funding those amounts. There is a slight differential that's noted on this page. There is a consumer price component to what's in the Indians' lease, so the $500,000 grows on an annual basis by the Consumer Price Index. At this point now, with regard to Progressive Field, any individual capital repair that's in excess of roughly $525,000 is the responsibility of Gateway. Importantly, the repairs must be within the scope of the original design. Gateway's Board meets six times a year at this point. We consider requests made by the teams to execute capital repairs. We have a consultant, Osborn Engineering, that works closely with our staff to evaluate the timing and the need, whether a certain capital repair fits within the confines of our leases, and whether or not wear and tear of those components really has reached the point where a capital repair is required. What you have in front of you today and what would be included in the bond issue is the culmination of three different sets of Gateway Board approvals. There was a... There was an approval of the Gateway Board back in August of 2014 for roughly $9 million worth of improvements, or repairs, I should say, to Progressive Field, $23 million worth of repairs to Quicken Loans Arena, and then again this June, another set of repairs to Progressive Field, all totaling just over $60 million worth of combined repairs. All of this done within the confines of the Gateway Board policies and procedures with the help of our staff and our consultants from Osborn. The Cavaliers' amount... How do I go back?
Left arrow.
Left arrow? Got it. You got it? Okay, thanks. This is the set of repairs at Quicken Loans Arena. The roof replacement of nearly $4.2 million, CCTV, safety and security for $3 million, scoreboard and digital display replacement for nearly $9.4, video production $4.6, and the sound system of $1.8. I would say quickly, and I would be happy to address whatever questions the council may have, the roof replacement has been an item that the Gateway Board has been discussing for years. It is the original roof system. It needs to be replaced. There's even some leakage that takes place from time to time. This is an item that is very much required. The safety and security system and the bowl sound system were both original components of... So they're circa 1994, well past their useful life. In fact, and this is true of the... Certain of the components in the control room as well, past the time of the manufacturer's ability to even supply replacement parts or to adequately service these items. The scoreboard and digital display replacement equipment... Scoreboards are, I know, of interest to many. There was rigorous discussion on the scoreboard for both the arena and the ballpark at the Gateway Board level. We do, as a board, at the Gateway Board feels that the scoreboards are integral components of the entire building system, and we do feel that it is important to have a competitive, state-of-the-art scoreboard, because it does help attract events to the facilities that are ultimately owned by the public and attract both local residents and out-of-town residents to the facilities. Beyond that, we do have an obligation under our lease to consider, at least reasonably, it's an important component in the Cavaliers' lease, to consider scoreboard replacement every seven years. This will be, and as we know, the building is 20 years old, this will be the first publicly-funded scoreboard replacement at the arena since the initial construction in 1994. There was a replacement scoreboard installed in the early 2000s, I believe, 2003 or so, that was funded by the Cavaliers. So this is the first that is being requested to be publicly funded. Happy to stop here if there are questions, but I can go to the Progressive Field repairs.
Are there any questions at this point, or would you prefer to wait? Councilman Miller? And I thought I heard... Okay.
First of all, since you just mentioned the scoreboard, is there anything that distinguishes the 2003 scoreboard from the current scoreboard that accounts for why the last one was privately funded and this one is proposed to be publicly funded?
Mr. President, to the councilmen, other than the fact that technology has changed significantly since the early 2000s, those are certainly distinguishing factors between the public funding for the scoreboard now and the private funding for the scoreboard then. I would say, though, that the real reason, the primary reason, for the difference in funding approaches is because now there is... There is a public source that's been identified and put in place for the purpose, and that was not in place for the purpose in the early 2000s.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Oftemack?
Can you... Assuming that we act... We need to react to this.
On this request, can you give us some idea of the timetable on the bond offering and when the construction would start and what the impact of the RNC might have on the construction process?
Mr. President, to the councilmen, with regard to the Cavaliers' improvements, the scoreboard work is done. The sound system work is done, pre-funded by the Cavaliers. They are looking for reimbursement at this point. The video production and security systems work is underway, just recently started, and the roof replacement work is the... The design work, the contracting, is close to being ready to go. Bid package out? Yes, no?
Within a month.
Bid package on the roof out within a month. So none of this work at the arena would conflict with RNC activity. Some of this work, the fact that the work is in place, I think, will enhance the ability to stage the RNC, the convention itself at the facility. As you know, the arena is basically the home primarily for the convention.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Oftemack, I notice that the funding amounts for the Cavaliers and for Progressive Field are different. And my question is, does this reflect an agreement that funding from the sin tax is going to be on a determined need basis as opposed to some kind of an even split?
Councilman Miller, I would say this. I'm only here to, you know, represent the Gateway facilities. However, we have been in conversation with the city, and as you're aware, the city has an interest in the excise tax proceeds as well as it relates to the football stadium. The city is aware and is comfortable with the fact that this initial funding request will be dedicated to the two Gateway facilities, and the concept for the flow of funds and any future financing arrangements may accommodate the football stadium. What the general concept here is that there would be enough, frankly, more than enough money to fund debt service on this set of bonds. The idea being that there would be a significant amount of cash that would be remaining after the payment of bonds for ongoing annual capital requests that are not funded with bonds.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask about First Energy. Would it just suffice to say at this point that we anticipate that there would be funding for that facility as well, but the exact amounts and timing are to be determined?
I think that's a correct statement. There is a general notion that there will be an even split among the three facilities, but the timing is unknown from Gateway's perspective. The Gateway Board is committed to taking the requests put forth by the two teams, analyzing them rigorously, and evaluating, knowing that we have parameters that we must deal with inside of our leases, but evaluating them as for timing and reasonableness. And it's not Gateway's expectation that we would be funding items that don't need to be funded just to provide some sort of an arbitrary split among the three facilities.
And, Mr. Chairman, finally, being the first day of the season, I just got to say, "Go Cavaliers," and let's get it done this time.
Would be nice.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Jones, and then Councilwoman Conwell.
Thank you. Tim, being a regular attendee of the Cavaliers, I've seen the humongatron that they have there, and that was just introduced last season, for the basketball season. You said they were replacing it every seven years. Is this funding, is this $9 million for something new after that, after what they've already...
No, that would be for the... That would be for the system that they put in for the beginning of last season. They fronted that money, and they are looking for reimbursement of the money that they have expended to replace the scoreboard.
And that is what you are considering now for approval?
Yes, sir.
Or have you already... Okay. During the campaign, and as we were having our initial conversations, part of the dialogue was around economic inclusion and the importance of that as far as being able to effectively campaign in the community to gain support. It was something that was talked about. If they have already done the work, the question is what inclusion goals were a part of that, and have you, and would like for you, to actually get regular reports. These inclusion goals being contracting, jobs, apprenticeship opportunities, these things, we're traditionally used to seeing them on the building of a building like this, a one-time construction. We have a model in place. This is different, because we're looking at repairs over 20 years, so the model obviously will be a little different, but it's manageable and it certainly can be shared with the community. Tell us what you've learned about these so far, and will you be getting regular reports?
Mr. President, councilmen, at each of the Gateways, let me just back up a half step and say, for all of these repairs, whether they've been started, or whether they've been started and completed, or even in the case of the Indians, I think you're aware, the Indians executed some alterations, that they funded themselves above and beyond these capital repairs as set forth in our leases. In each one of those instances, Gateway is the owner and primary contracting entity, and as you might recall, our Board approved inclusion obligations on Gateway that are consistent with the city's inclusion parameters, and we apply those to every contract. In each one of our Board meetings, we do have an inclusion update, and we've got some really very detailed reporting that we'd be happy to share with you and the council as a whole. We've reported on those at each one of our Gateway Board meetings, but we'd be pleased to share them with the council.
Make it... I would ask that we make that a part of your regular presentation to us.
Okay.
And with...
Be happy to do that.
And we have an electronic copy as well.
Be happy to do that. We work very hard at that, and our staff spends lots of time on it. So we're really pretty proud of our record. We're proud of our record that goes all the way back into the early 90s with regard to inclusion, but even on this work now, we work very hard on it, and we'd really be pleased to share that.
And I'll give kudos to the Indians, because I did meet with them, and they voluntarily made some inclusion goals and some strong goals without using a single syntax style. So on their projects, they were doing some very good things, and I'd like to see that in writing as well.
We do have, by the way, Mr. President, to the councilmen, we do have inclusion policies that Gateway has in place, and the Indians, for their work that they funded, and for all of this work, whether it's done or about to get started, the Gateway and concert with the teams and the contractors are expected to follow our policies and procedures with regard to inclusion. Thank you.
Councilwoman Conwell.
To the chair, just have a request, that if you could send council a list of capital repairs, needs for each facility. I think that has been sent out, but can it include when major items were repaired and expected life of each of the units?
We... Mr. President, to the councilwoman, we can definitely send that out. For each of these items here, we do have expected useful lives for each one of these items.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, you were... It seemed like you were kind of careful to distinguish between repairs and improvement. Is there a distinction?
There's... Mr. President, to the councilwoman, there's most definitely a distinction, and I am careful with that. Our commitment to you as a council, when you agreed to put the tax extension on the ballot, and as importantly, our obligation to the teams is limited by our obligation to provide repairs as set forth in the leases, up to and including the maximum amount that were required, the maximum level were required to execute those repairs, which is generally, save for advancements in technology or some competitiveness, but generally is defined by the original design parameters for the two facilities. So these are indeed repairs. These are not improvements. These are not enhancements. Now, having said that, you know, if you look at the... If you look at this scoreboard, and you try and remember back to the scoreboard that was there in 1994, I mean, clearly, it's an improvement, because you wouldn't put the same technology in place in 2015 or '14 that you would in 1994. However, we will only do what the lease requires us to do, period.
Okay. And if you could just, for my clarification, and I don't need it in this form, if you could just send me the clarification between the difference of the two.
Sure.
Okay. And then the other question that I have of the requests for the Cavaliers, are all of these reimbursements or just a portion?
The roof repair has not been commenced yet. The control room and CCTV are underway, so some of it will not be reimbursement, but the sound system and the scoreboard are reimbursements.
And one last question, Mr. Chair, to our gentleman giving us the information today. You know what? I think that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman... Councilman Greenspan.
Great, thank you. Just clarity on the improvement enhancement. So on the scoreboard at the Q, as an example, you have the scoreboard proper, and then you have the team-specific elements. For the Cavaliers, obviously, there are other teams that play there and other events, but, you know, the swords and the flaming, the flames, are those enhancements to the scoreboard? Did we pay for that, or is that something that the team would be responsible for paying for at their cost?
The entire scope of the system is included in this number.
So if the Gladiators wanted some special enhancement as a user of the facility, would they be able to apply in and have those enhancements made side-by-side or replacement with the Cavaliers, as an example?
Mr. President, to the councilmen, I would think that at this point...
Well, not at this point, but at the time the scoreboard's being designed.
Even at the time, what we did, and we did the... Ran through the same process at the baseball park. What our staff and consultants did was look at competitive facilities... What, uh, what our staff and consultants did was look at competitive facilities, uh, look at the state of the art, and evaluate, um, uh, and evaluate the entire system based on a level of competitiveness, uh, because it was our board's directive to not be excessive.
I don't, I'll need to clarify, I didn't mean the, the competitor, the not, I'm not talking about the components of the scoreboard, I'm saying kinda what I would call the add-on features, the, the Cavalier C's with the swords. If the Gladiators wanted something up when they're playing, or another user, major user wanted something, would that be entertained as part of the Gateway's proposal for the scoreboard?
Um, Mr. President, Councilman, I, I think I can say in fairness that we, uh, we evaluate everything, um, with a, uh, with reasonableness and competitiveness in mind. Uh, I think on balance, uh, if it would, if there would have been a requirement to have a separate set of, um-
End caps or whatever.
Yeah, it is to separate, a separate system for each particular, uh, each, each particular entity that is, that stages events at the arena, uh, we would have, we would have found that to be, uh, not beyond competitive.
Cause the, cause the Monsters are the same thing, they're in their forty, forty games.
Right.
Two, two more questions. On, on the, the, the math that I added up shows a request for about sixty and a half million, million dollars, but the legislation's for sixty-five. What makes, what, it's a not to exceed, so, but I understand there are some bonds, some costs associated with putting this. Where do you, if you're asking for sixty and a half, where do you think the true ask is gonna fall? What other fees are associated, um, in this, in this proposal?
Um, uh, Mr. President, Councilman, just to make sure that, I'm here representing Gateway as the board chair, I'm not the county's financial advisor, or, uh, sadly, I'm not the underwriter on this issue either, uh, but as I think the council generally knows I do this for a living, um, the, I, the, the reason for the differential between the amount of capital and the not to exceed, uh, is some room for, uh, some room for costs and a reserve. Uh, I believe that there is an expectation that there would be, in essence, a one-year's debt service set aside in case there's a significant downturn in the level of tax receipts, so that there is some protection to bondholders. So there is an expectation, so one year's worth of debt service would be set aside. I would, I would say it's an expectation at this point, uh, under current market conditions, that, um, the issue size would be closer to sixty than sixty-five, um, because the reserve would be funded from the proceeds of the purchase price from the underwriter to the county.
So that brings up another, feeds into my next schedule. So the intent, or next question, the intent is to bond sixty-five?
The intent is, the intent would be, under current market conditions, to bond closer to sixty as opposed to sixty-five.
You're asking for sixty million, five hundred thousand.
Uh, don't know.
I'm just adding up the two amounts.
Uh, understood. Don't know at this point whether or not the original issue premium component, uh, the different, whether or not the, uh, purchase price will continue to be such that it would be able to fully fund the amount of the reserve fund. If it's not, then you'd have to use, uh, then the issue size would have to grow to be able to accommodate the reserve. Right now, it doesn't look like issue size will be required to fund the reserve, that the purchase price would-
So the intent is to issue these at a premium and not a discount? The bond?
The current market, current-
Yeah.
Market for municipal bonds, tax-exempt municipal bonds these days, not to get, delve too much, uh, into this, suggests-
A premium.
That the lowest overall cost to the county would include a premium purchase.
All right, let's just make sure that we amortize those premiums and don't get, don't get bitten like we did if, two years ago on, in our, in the investment side. Um, what's the annual collection off the syntax anticipated to be?
Uh, Mr. President of the Councilman, in 2014, it was just over fourteen million.
And what's the debt, the annual debt service on this bond anticipated to be?
Um, about, um, about five million, I believe.
All right. Great. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, back to Councilwoman Brown, and then back to Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question that I have was, um, is with regards to the repairing costs over half a million dollars. Do we have a, um, some sort of maintenance agreement in place annually to ensure that, um, our tenants, if you will, are not neglecting the property to the point that a repair could exceed that half a million dollars to now it's, um, the owners of the county to make the repair? You follow what I'm-
Oh, absolutely. Uh, it's a great question, uh, Mr. President, Councilwoman. Um, we've got, uh, very extensive lease agreements with these two tenants, uh, that rigorously address the tenants' obligations to provide preventative maintenance and to fund ongoing, uh, maintenance and non-capital repair work, uh, that they do on a regular basis. Um, in addition, there are annual reports that are required to be delivered by both the, uh, the Cavaliers and the Indians to Gateway. Uh, there are monthly, uh, what I'll call for lack of any better description, walkthroughs that are, uh, that are described in each of the lease agreements that, uh, provide by contract an obligation of each of the teams to give Gateway the opportunity to walk through the facilities and monitor whether or not the physical plant respectively is being maintained properly.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Jones.
I need a little bond issuance one oh one. You, you just said for 2014, uh, we, we're generating fourteen million? That's the end of the last syntax, is that correct? The, the first year starts with August of, of this year?
Uh, Mr. President, Councilman, correct. Uh, there would not be expected to be any bond payments, uh, from this, required to be funded by the 2015 portion of the levy of the third syntax. Um, uh, the first of the debt, the first of the debt service obligations would be required to be paid i- in June of 2016. Uh, so the fu, the funding that, uh, the funding that's received, the tax receipts collected, if you will, during the first six months of 2016 will fund the first of the bond payments.
Will fund it. So again, when I say issue, um, one oh one, the, the, it's excise tax revenues that we get from first year's collections of these new syntax dollars will be used to bond out this sixty-five million.
Uh, uh, Councilman Jones, the, uh, the proceeds for, from the new levy-
From the new-
Will fund bond debt service and provide a significant amount of dollars available, uh, in, starting now, that would be available for other capital repairs at really the three buildings, including First Energy Stadium. Uh, but, um, those, any further repairs beyond what you're considering here would, I suspect, need to follow a similar process. I mean, I can tell you, from Gateway's perspective, as it relates to the baseball park and the arena, uh, uh, any of those future repairs would have to come through the Gateway Board, and then we'd be coming to you in a similar forum that we're here today under. I, I'm not sure how it will work with the city and the county related to the football stadium.
The revenue source to repay the debt generated, is that the, the ticket sales from the teams? What, what is that revenue source?
That's from the excise tax.
From the excise, okay.
The, the excise tax will first be used to pay the bonds, and then whatever's left will be available for other capital repairs.
Okay.
And there should be, uh, significant residual after the payment of bond debt service in each of the next, however many years, uh, this bond issue is floated for. The current model is roughly ten years, it may be, uh, there may be some variation on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you can, um, I believe you can proceed with your, uh, presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll go to the, uh, baseball park here quickly. Um, Trevor told me I could only speak for an hour, or he was gonna come and pull me out of here, so I wanna try and do this as expeditiously as possible. Um, much of this work at the baseball park, um, with the exception of the scoreboard, uh, is original equipment. Um, some of it is failing because of its, uh, because of its age. Uh, manufacturer's warranties are long since expired, uh, and as in the case of the CCTV, uh, at the arena, um, the manufacturers are unable to supply, uh, replacement parts. Uh, sound system is the original sound system, um, and if you've been to the ballpark at all recently, you know what the quality of the current sound system is. Uh, high steel painting is generally, uh, the steel that's, uh, near the roof line, uh, also the steel going up to the light standards. Um, concrete resurfacing, uh, being twenty years old, this is in the concourses and the rampways, uh, the access points to the ballpark, uh, there's, uh, damage to the element, generated by the elements, uh, and age, much of that is original, uh, circa nineteen ninety-four. Same thing with the food service equipment, I'll save the scoreboard. Um, HVAC, which is the air handling systems, chilled water plant, uh, original equipment. I, I will say, uh, that the Indians have done a very commendable job, uh, doing their best to maintain these facilities over the years with their own money. Uh, a lot of the maintenance has been, um, uh, patchwork, they've done some replacement to the extent that they can, uh, themselves. Uh, sweetened press box fire suppression, uh, code compliance, that is with their insurer, that's, uh, the insurer is requiring that replacement, and that is, by the way, consistent with our lease obligations. Um, uh, uh, glass and glazing in the sweetened press box, again, original work that, uh, that needs to be replaced. Sweet and balcony store, uh, flooring, uh, same deal there, and part of what we're gonna do is replace carpeting, uh, that's original carpeting in many places, and we're gonna replace that with an epoxy coating that we've been testing in some other parts of the ballpark. It's worked really well. Uh, in addition, we've got a very good relationship with the, uh, with the folks in Baltimore at Camden Yards. They've used this system, and it's worked very well there. Uh, again, CCTV, uh, age system, a lot of it, original, uh, hard-to-get parts, this new safety and security system, granted, very important for the convention here next year, but also more important, uh, this system will talk to the Cavalier's system, uh, and also to the city and the county emergency management networks, uh, so that we can effectively manage, uh, a security situation that may arise, uh, at the facilities. Uh, with regard to the scoreboard, um, uh, the, our, our ballpark lease gives us, frankly, a little more influence in the evaluation of the scoreboard system at the ballpark than we have at the arena. Uh, we, uh, we, this is the third, this would be the third scoreboard at the ballpark. Uh, the original board, which was, at the time, the largest freestanding scoreboard in North America, uh, back in nineteen ninety-four, uh, was replaced by the Indians with the help of the county in 2003. And to be clear, the county's assistance in that particular situation was that, uh, there was a refinancing of Gateway bonds back in 2003. Uh, the Indians paid the debt service on those bonds. Uh, part of the refunding proceeds, uh, about half of the cost of the scoreboard at that time was funded by the refunding bond proceeds. Indians paid the debt service, but the county enhanced the credit of the bonds, making the interest rate much lower, far more affordable for the Indians to pay the debt service. Uh, so the county was a significant player in those financing arrangements at that point. Uh, but, uh, per se, uh, that particular scoreboard in 2003 was, uh, funded privately, again, with significant help by the county on credit enhancement. County guaranteed the payment of debt service on the bonds, um, which made the bonds marketable. Um, this particular system, uh, uh, was analyzed with our lease obligations in mind. In essence, what we must do with this particular board is, um, provide a system to the Indians that will be within the top seventy-five percent of similar components in Major League Baseball projected out five years. So what our staff and our consultant did was looked at the recent history of scoreboards in Major League Baseball, uh, compared this board against boards that are in place now and boards that are currently in the planning stage, or, uh, that we may project out based on trends, will be in place five years from now. Um, and what we have ended up with is a board that is, uh, in the top third in Major League Baseball in terms of square footage, um, about seventy-five hundred, uh, square feet. Um, new board in Atlanta, uh, and the new board that's already in Seattle, by the way, but, uh, you may be aware, in Atlanta, there's new baseball stadium under construction. The board at Progressive Field will be about forty percent of the size of the board, uh, in Atlanta's new ballpark. Um, so it's not the biggest board out there any longer, uh, and it's, uh, but it's big, make no mistake about it, it's big. I mean, I think mostly you're aware of the, the scoreboard building that's there in left field, and it's a big structure, and the scoreboard will take up that entire, uh, that entire structure. Um, again, resolution is about middle of the pack. Um, uh, it is expensive, no two ways around it. Um, it's got, uh, it's an estimated cost of sixteen million dollars. We worked very hard, this was not the Indians', uh, original proposal to us, we worked very hard to, um, evaluate this against the competition and projected competition over the next five years, and I will say that it is also likely that the cost, uh, based on the work of our staff, uh, will likely be less than sixteen million dollars. Um, uh, the total amount, uh, that has come through the Gateway Board- The total amount that has come through the Gateway Board in both August of 2014 and June of 2015 totals just shy of 37 million, 37 and a half million. And I'd be happy to answer whatever detailed questions you may have, I should say, for Councilwoman Jones. The expectation is that as they did with their alterations, that they funded themselves, that the Indians will work through Gateway as the owner and the contracting agent here, and they will be required to meet our inclusion requirements.
Councilwoman Conwell.
Through the chair, to the chairman, out of all these repairs for both the Indians and the Cavs, is there anything that is not included?
Mr. President, the councilwoman, I'm not sure I follow the question, but-
Out of the repairs that you've listed, the major capital repairs that are listed for the Indians and the Cavs, is there something that has not been included in this list? And, or anything that's ending its, that we're obligated to pay, ending its lifetime expectancy?
To answer the first question, no ma'am, this is the full list for this time. However, you may recall during the campaign, when the teams and Gateway presented to you before the council voted to place the ballot measure in front of the voters, the teams provided a, a list of their estimated repairs over 10 years. And if I recall, each list was close to $60 million apiece. So there is, they certainly will have additional repairs, repair requests coming. We don't, the Gateway Board does not have any in front of it currently, but I'm sure that there will be future requests coming.
Okay, so you stated that you provided us the list, and you probably did, but that was a couple of years ago. So could you resend that list and I guess highlight what, on that list, what is being included currently?
Yes, ma'am.
As the capital repairs, so it can stand out and we can see what is left? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Simon and then Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. So, so what is the, again, anticipated life of this scoreboard?
The life of this scoreboard i- is expected to be 10 years at least. Each of the first boards, and this is true even at the arena, lasted about 10 years. There is a warranty for 10 years-
Warranty through 10.
On this board, and by the way, the Indians are, the Indians are funding the last seven years of those warranty costs, give them some props for that. But there is a 10-year warranty on this. In the ballpark lease, we're not obligated to replace the scoreboards except for every 10 years.
What happens to these scoreboards? Do they not score correctly or they're just not trendy and flashy?
Mr. President, the councilwoman, clearly, if you've been to the ballpark at any time in the last 15 years, the scoreboards don't work well because the Indians don't score much.
Maybe we, we need to redirect some of the funding, maybe, right?
The, seriously though, the, the current scoreboard is in a fairly sad state of repair, it is failing. There, there would be a genuine concern about its ability to perform for another full season. So the warranty period is up. It, it's also hard to find replacement parts for that board. Perhaps you notice from time to time with those that go to the ballpark, from now, every now and then, there's like little black rectangular boxes that show up around the scoreboard. It's failing.
All right, Councilwoman Simon, are you, are you good? Okay, I doubt you're finished. Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, Mr. Oftemag, how, how long are these bonds for?
I suspect the bonds will be for approximately 10 years.
And given that we've already received a year's about, is that correct?
Mr. President, the councilman, the, the levy for this third version of the excise tax started August 1st of 2015, probably in October, there's about a two-month lag in terms of collection on this. You receive, the county receives the money from the state, from individual pieces, parts, whether it's liquor or beer, wine, et cetera, cigarettes. You should start seeing some money from the new levy this month. However, there is 20 years or 25 years worth of history on this tax at the same rates. So I think there's a pretty good grasp of how much the tax generates on a annual basis.
Are you saying that even though it's been more than a year since it's passed, we're only starting now to get money from the, from the new levy?
The, yes, sir, that's correct. The second, the second excise tax levy was not set to expire until July 31st, 2015, with the third one then starting collection August 1st of 2015. And that's what we're talking about here.
Okay, and my, my final question is, with proper repair and, and these upgrades and continuing efforts, how long do we think that the, that the ballpark could continue to go until we have to start thinking about a new facility?
Mr. President, the councilman, it's a great question. I, I would speak generally from the standpoint of the Major League sports industry. Certainly, you've seen facilities in other markets, Atlanta being one, where, where a facility, be it a stadium or a multipurpose arena, was abandoned. And a new one was built either in that market or in a different market. The, the physical structure, I think if you were talking to an engineer, they, they would tell you that the physical structure could, could exist, assuming relatively good maintenance, for another 20 years, for sure. The, the question is economic relevance in a changing environment for Major League sports. It's hard to project out what, what live Major League sports is going to look like 20 or 25 years from now. The Indians have been great partners with Gateway and the city and the county, in my view. They've done an amazing job of maintaining the facility and keeping it fresh for their customers. The application of these dollars, though, do suggest that there's some age on the building and there's some work that needs to be done. And I know I'm not even coming close to answering your question, except to say that I think, and I'm not speaking for the Indians, but from Gateway's perspective, with, with sound management of the capital plant, we certainly don't see in sight a, a market without the Indians or a need for a new building. That doesn't mean there won't be a need at some point in the future for some significant new investment beyond, you know, it's unlikely that the extension of the excise tax will fund all the capital repairs required under the leases for these three buildings. And I don't know, at this point, I can't say how we tackle what might come beyond that funding. All I can promise you is that the Gateway Board will rigorously analyze each and every repair in an attempt to extend the both useful and economic lives of these buildings as long as possible.
Mr. Chairman, I know that it's, it's often said that the, the typical lifetime for ballparks is about 30 years and a little less for arenas, but I'm, I'm hoping that, that through proper maintenance and, and not deferring things that need to be done, that we can, we can do considerably better than that, because we are, we don't have the kind of population base and media market of someplace like Atlanta, but still, we certainly, certainly want to have, have world-class Major League sports. And I would, I would say that I very much enjoy going to Progressive Field. I think the facility is, is, is still a great facility in most respects and it has been well-maintained. The, the requested improvements are needed, but, but we're doing pretty well so far.
Thank you. I believe we're going to Councilman Jones.
Again, when we went before the voters, it was, it was campaigning strictly for maintenance and repairs on the three sports teams. There were some, at least some initial inquiries that, that the money might be used for, for some of the existing debt on the Cleveland Football Stadium. Those monies are still strictly for maintenance and repair. Have there been any requests for anything other than what these dollars have been earmarked for?
Mr. President, the councilman, there have not. And as I noted earlier, the city's aware of what the county's considering at this point, and they're comfortable with the baseball park and the arena getting the, this first, these first dollars from the, from the extended excise tax. I do expect that they will come back from time to time for, for dollars for First Energy Stadium, and I would expect those to be for capital repairs under the, under the Browns' lease with the city.
When do you expect to go to the bond market?
I would expect that the county will be going to the bond market in early, somewhere between early and mid-December. Again, that's a, that's a call for the county's financial advisor and the, and the fiscal office to make, not mine, but my understanding is that's the current expectation.
And again, going back to my bond issuance 101, help me to make sure I understand this clearly, for the next 20 years, we may get roughly $13 million on average?
I, I did, Councilman Jones, I did establish a, you know, something of a cash flow model for this that I've shared with the county and the county's financial advisor. And it, it does show a first-year collection of roughly 14 million, but then it does assume, I don't want to say project, but it assumes that the annual tax revenue will decline some annually going forward, which is generally what the history has suggested.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. But be that as it may, I think it's the expectation of the county and its FA that there will be considerable residual dollars after debt service every year that will be available for application of the cash to further capital repairs.
So for the sake of my point and understanding, let's say if it's $13 million a year for 20 years, that's 260 million, roughly, 260. If we bond out to generate 65 million, okay, we bring an additional 65 million into the mix, and out of that 260 million, you're going to repay that debt to the tune of $5 million a year?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, so 5 million a year goes to the debt, and if it's 13 million a year, then there's 8, 8 million roughly to, again, do other repairs. So 8 million a year. So is, is the, so we don't actually get more money? You're getting more money upfront, is that-
Mr. President, to the councilman, that's a great question. It's true, you're not getting more money. In fact, some of the excise taxes are being used to pay interest to bondholders. So if your, if your initial amount that, if you're assuming all cash collections and if you assume $240 million worth of cash collected over the 20-year period, approximately 6 or 7 million dollars of this issue, perhaps a little bit more, will be comprised of interest. And that interest will not be available to fund capital repairs, but it must be used to pay, to pay the interest cost to bondholders. So in essence, you're not getting more money, you are getting money upfront to execute these repairs, but in fact, you're getting less because you've got a new, you've got a new line item on the use side of your equation.
So the whole point of going out to bond really isn't to get more money, since we are getting less, but it appears to get more money upfront. Are we saying our needs for the repairs are such that we need this money upfront as opposed to getting it each year?
And Mr. President, the councilman, our evaluation from Gateway's perspective, and I think the respective tenants would agree, is that, as I noted in running through each of these individual line items, most of them are past their lives. Most of them no longer have replacement components that are available. It's hard to even find anybody to make service calls on some of this stuff at this point. So it is, it is important that these, these repairs be executed right now.
And my last question is, I think I heard you say the Councilman Miller's question that we're bonding out for 10 years, I thought it was 20 years. Is it, is it 10 years?
Mr. President, the councilman, the tax is for 20 years. The expectation is that these bonds would be for a considerable period less than the 20-year length of the tax collections. There may be, there may be a time at some point in the future when another bond issue is contemplated. So, you know, I think what the expectation would be that this bond issue would not take the entire time.
Let me ask that same question another way. If we're raising 65 million through the bonds and you're paying back 5 million a year, how many years do you plan to pay $5 million?
For these bonds, for 10 years.
So we'll pay back 50 million and borrow 65 million. What am I missing?
Well, you're, you're paying both principal and interest. Well, you're, you're paying both principal and interest each year. Uh, what's the annual debt service? Do you guys remember?
It's closer to 6 and 1/2.
Okay, I didn't, didn't wanna miss it. It's closer to 6 and 1/2 million a year, but still, I mean, the essence of your question is the same. Um, but to be clear, I mean, there's a principal component and an interest component. Um, so, um, uh, you, you would pay 6 and 1/2 million dollars per year, uh, and that would amortize roughly 60 million dollars in principal plus pay the interest.
Okay.
Because our, the current estimate is that the amount of principal, uh, that's, uh, the principal component of the bonds is roughly 60 million.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go back to Councilman Conwell, then we're gonna go to Councilman Greenspan. People be knowledgeable, uh, aware of the fact that we have a 5 o'clock, uh, council meeting, and that this will go, this resolution, uh, considering its scale, and, uh, it's gonna, gonna go full third reading, full three readings with it. Doesn't seem to be a problem if you're going, you're looking at December. Uh, okay.
All right, through the chair, uh, just to follow up, uh, Mr. Chairman on the, of the board, you never did say your name. I know I should...
Oh, uh, that's okay, I'm Tim Aftermatt, I apologize.
And I know I should know your name, sir.
That's okay.
Just to follow up on what you stated when we were talking about the scoreboard systems for the Indians, you, you made a statement that the Indians have paid more, uh, for the warranty. What is that price? What does that cost for that warranty that they paid for seven years? You said they've been paying the warranty.
Uh, they have not been paying it, that, but they've agreed to pay the warranty for the new board, so these are prospective.
Okay, so they didn't pay for the last one? I misunderstood.
They, they actually paid for the physical cost of the last one, 100%.
Okay. And this one, they're just willing to pay the, just the warranty? Do you have a price out of what that would be? For the war, what's the warranty cost? And you said for seven years, even though...
Yes, ma'am.
Even though you stated to Councilwoman Simon that probably it will last 10 years, so why wouldn't they?
Uh, Mr. President, the councilwoman, uh, they've agreed to pay for the last seven years of the warranty. Uh, um, the, the first couple of years will be funded, uh, from this. Uh, we'll have to get back to you with the amount of that warranty cost. We don't have it available.
Thank you. All right. If, uh, Councilman Greenspan has indicated that, uh, his question was answered by someone previously, if there are no further questions, um, thank you, Mr. Aftermatt. We will, uh, if I could take a, a vote on the, uh, resolution as substituted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolution as substituted is passed and will go to the, and will move to the full council. So thank you. Is there any other miscellaneous business for the committee of the whole? Uh, are there any public comment unrelated to the agenda for the committee of the whole?
No, Mr. Chair.
This meeting is adjourned. We'll be back at 5 o'clock for our regular meeting.